Welcome, everybody. Why don't we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the one nation under God.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bush. Councilmember Bush.
Laura, you got unmute?
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Clay?
Yes.
Gesse?
Here.
Latander?
Here.
Lebec?
Here.
Matola?
Here.
Yavis Matias?
Here.
O'Connell?
Here.
Rogers?
Here.
Tedford?
Here.
Wendis?
Here.
Bush?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. Citizens Forum, is there anybody here for Citizens Forum?
Yes, Mr. Mike.
Hello, Genario. Hear me, Mr. Mike?
I can hear you, Genario.
Genaro. I got you. I live on West Main Street. Vernon, Connecticut. Well, I believe last week was the beginning of this week. I don't remember. I submitted a notice of intent to submit on the public bond of the town. I don't know if y'all received it. I know that it's been given to me. But also, I've been trying to get in contact with the office so somebody can call me back to notify me what was going to happen if the town of Vernon was going to keep the face mandate for everybody after the executive orders dropped. There's like messages and I call, but nobody contacts me back. And another thing, my son got hurt in school. They're saying that they don't really know what happened to my son. No. I'm not here to really. All I'm saying is like the teachers, you know, they got to watch the kids, right? You know what I mean? Especially if they're paying on the metal bars because if my son would have hit that bar with another probably 10 pounds or 15 pounds, he would have cracked his whole skull open. You know, and it's like, do I have to worry about letting my son go to a public school where they get paid, to me, sufficient enough funds to take care of themselves in one year? Okay? And when you want somebody's child, you got to watch them. You know? It just, you do. He came home with a hole in his head. They're saying that they stopped the bleeding, but you know, it's okay if they stop the bleeding, but he still came home with a hole in his head. You know, and the doctor was the one that stressed, not me. He was like, man, they got to tell you something. You know, and then when I told the health person, that person that they worked for DCF, when I told them what happened, like it happened at school, they were like, this happened at school? I'm like, yeah, this happened at school. And I went back to my phone and they kind of like walked outside. But it was the truth, though. You know? I don't know what to do about that. I really, really don't. I'm a little bit confused about it. But about the intent, I need to know from the board, what are y'all going to do? If I don't get an answer, I don't want, I'm not have to submit a claim on your bond. I don't want to do that. I have your claim number. I have your bond insurance. I have everybody I got to call to. But I just need an answer so I can make a decision if I, if I want to or I don't want to. But if you avoid me, it's going to make me think you're hiding something. And if you're hiding something, it's going to make me submit it just to get the truth out. You know? It's like, do you really want your lawyer to go through all this? Do you want to really spend money? You know, like, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm being very, very honest with you. Do you want to spend money? If you do, I'm willing to try your lawyer, man. I, to me, is like I've been neglect of certain education. I am so happy that I just finished reading the Juris Corporis Secundum, Bouvier's Law, and I'm mastering other things right now when it comes to law, not Connecticut general statutes. You know, but we need to understand that if we are put a claim on the bond, you're going to put a claim on the public. Because that's not your money. But please think about it. I'm at home contacting you. Let me know what you're going to do. That's all I want to know. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll call tomorrow.
Okay, so the Board of Ed is in charge of anything with the schools. So hopefully they'll reach out to you.
No, he's spoken to me already. He was good at that. But I just want to know what y'all going to do. Because I heard Lamont say that he was gonna, he's going to leave it up to basically to the corporations, to me.
It's the Board, it'll be up to the Board of Eds.
It'll be up to the Board of Ed?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else for Citizens Forum? Go ahead, Terry.
I see you, man. Just one thing I noticed. When you go down to 375 and you see all the signage for the COVID, every time I go by, it kind of like a hot mess. So we got really great accolades for, you know, all the COVID work we've been doing. And then when you drive by the center, you have like sawhorses, sandbags, and you know, the signs. And now we have big like car lot signs down there waving. I just think that to advertise that we're, you know, we're doing the testing COVID, we could have like a little bit nicer signage for there and a setup. And I think it's just like curb appeal, just like when you drive past the dog park, I think, you know, curb appeal in the community would go a long way. So I just think the signs used to be fixed. I wanted to stop my car and take the sawhorses down and fix it because it just looks like a hot mess when you drive by.
Those are temporary. I'm hoping we're not going to need them.
Yeah, I know they can be removed and taken down, but it is just a hot mess. It just looks like a hot mess when you drive.
I just don't want to spend any money on anything permanent. We made those in-house.
You can tell.
Taxpayers' dollar, so.
Yeah, I don't mind spending some little money on like something looking a little bit better, but it's just me. Thank you.
And anybody else for Citizens Forum? Speak up, anybody? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on. Executive sessions will be held at the end. Get into myself. First of all, next month, we will be in person. The numbers are gone down. We're doing pretty good on our town side. So we will go back to in-person meetings next month. And can't wait to see you all again. All right, the income tax preparation programs are available through Social Services Department. If you qualify, please contact the Social Services Department at 860-870-3661 for more information and eligibility requirements. Income tax preparation for seniors is also available through the Vernon Senior Center. Contact the Senior Center for more information on their programs. That number is 860-870-3680, 860-870-3680. The Habitat for Humanity Restore had their grand opening this, this morning. They're located at the Old Shepherd's Building on Tocqueville Road. They offer lightly-used items of furniture and household items as well as new things that are in excess from building fix. We were happy to welcome Habitat for Humanity this morning. It was great to see a bunch of you there. As you may have heard, Yale Health System is purchasing ECHN. We'll be keeping you posted on this acquisition as it, as information becomes available. We are working on that on several different fronts. Twenty, the 2022 tax sale is scheduled for March 9th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The Town Council Chambers, Attorney Adam Cohen of the Law Firm of Pullman and Comley, LLC, will conduct the auction. Steve Prattson, our building official, will be leaving us for another position. We want to thank him for his service to the town of Vernon and wish him well. Lynn's Deli and Delights Ribbon Cutting and Grand Opening was held last week. Lynn's is located at 76 Union Street. Stop by and check out all the treats for sale. Again, thank you for all those that showed up to support that grand open. That is going to be it for my notes. Brian, Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, motion to remove the consent agenda as written.
Second, Mary Ann.
Seconded by Mary Ann. Are we pulling any of the items? All right, hearing none. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bush. Star six. Unmute. Can you show me your hand, please? Raise your hand.
I got it. Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Gesse?
Yes.
Latander?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Matola? Mr. Matola?
Yes.
Councilmember Yavis Matias?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Tedford?
Yes.
Wendis?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is technology. Get to turn that computer around each time. All right, Brian, new business number one.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby authorizes Michael J. Picaro, Town Administrator, to sign any and all documents relative to the 10-month lease modification with the Vernon Community Arts Center.
Seconded by Laura.
Seconded by Laura. All right, just to give you a heads up, we are going to do a 10-month lease instead of a year-long lease. We want to kind of line it up so that it happens just before budget season. And February 1 is currently the time where they, they turn in the paperwork to us. So this lease will expire at the end of February. And, you know, I hate how that voids me out like that. I think it's my forehead.
Remember, you said that, Dan.
I said it. Hey, you know, I could joke about it. But, uh, so we want to kind of line this up. So we're going 10 months. And, you know, hopefully, you know, with the numbers that we're seeing with, with COVID, they'll be down enough that we can hopefully get a true reading on how the, the art center is doing. I think it's doing really well. I think we're getting close. But obviously COVID has done a number on them. So that's why I'm looking at the 10-month extension of the current lease. Any, any questions on that? No? All right, this will be a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bush?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Gesse? Councilmember Gesse? Show your hand.
All right, excuse me, yes.
Latander?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Matola?
Yes.
Yavis Matias?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Tedford?
Yes.
Wendis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right, Brian. New business number two.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby authorizes the payment of 50% of the utility costs of the property known as 709 Hartford Turnpike, Vernon, Connecticut, said 50% utility cost will be paid directly to the utility company as required through the Public Works Budget. The remaining 50% will be paid by the tenant, Vernon Community Arts Center, per said lease dated April 25th, 2016.
Seconded by Laura.
I got Linda first. All right, Linda seconded it. So we do have members of the Arts Center East with us tonight. Liz is here. And is there anybody else, Liz?
Kathy Stevens.
Bird.
Bob Bird. And Ginny Emerson.
Yep, there's Ginny. Yep. All right, so basically, if anybody has any questions for me or anybody on the Arts Center East Board, our members, go ahead. Anybody? Anne?
Yes, thank you. I wholeheartedly support the Arts Center. I think it's a jewel in the community. And anything that we can do to help them. I just threw you, your honor, to Mr. Hurd, is there? Do you have any issue with, with 50%? How are you doing with it? Any comment on your part regarding that?
I think we're doing reasonably well in spite of all the adversity. With the, the last two years have been tough because for most of 2020, we were closed. And for part of 2021, we were still closed. So we don't really have a, a good handle on, on total costs because the building hasn't been fully occupied. We, we, we also know that, that energy costs have begun to climb in 2021, 2022. And we have no idea what that's going to, to do to us. But 50% has worked for the life of our two leases beginning in 2012. And we, we think we can work with that going forward.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Laura?
Yes, um, as the, through you, Mr. Mayor. As the town has been doing, what cost-saving measures have you put in place to try to bring down some of your electric costs?
Mr. Mayor? What's that? I know Dwight's on too. Mike, you want to, you want to?
Yes. If I may, Mr. Mayor, just to set the stage and if I can talk a little bit about the collaboration that we've enjoyed, I think, with Liz and her new capacity as Executive Director. It goes way beyond energy cost savings. And I think, and that's, that's obviously for, for another day. But I want to, I want everyone on the council to be aware that we do enjoy an open and collaborative working relationship. We've been supportive from the town and the public school system with providing support for events that have happened or were being planned to happen in some respects. Unfortunately, a big one had to be canceled. But the town and the Board of Education were there to support and help offset costs for some of those events as well by providing tables, chairs, and other logistical support. So, but beyond that, with the focus tonight is by the numbers, yes, we've been engaged. We made a commitment to the council with, with our Public Works Department to continue to work to try to find ways to help the Arts Center East curb some of their, their costs. And as technology advances, so have some of the efforts that we've, we've implemented. So the last time we spoke, we were going from incandescent and halogen bulbs to fluorescent. And we engaged EverSource and others in that endeavor to do it at the best possible price, which obviously lowered our energy costs. And that was done, again, collaboratively with Arts Center East. So there was no out-of-pocket cost for Arts Center East to do that. So the savings were immediate as far as controlling some of those rising energy costs that Mr. Hurd had mentioned. Well, technology's changed, as you know. Fluorescent bulbs are kind of like the 80s. And now we're moving towards LED bulbs. So we're going through the same process. And if I may, through the mayor, turn it over to Dwight. But we, we continue to be very engaged through Public Works. As issues come up, as bulbs burn out, we're not replacing them with fluorescent. We're replacing them with LED. And I know Dwight's been in there looking for, for various ways to, to help them with some of their energy utilization as well.
Dwight, you want to kick in anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor, thank you, Mike. We are currently, as Mike said, we are doing an energy audit currently. We're working with three different vendors right now. We're, we're looking at doing a total changeover to LED in the building. We also looked at the heating and cooling systems. And those are high-efficiency units. There's really not a lot of room for improvement there. And it is a rather big building. So there's a lot of space there to heat and cool and, and also light. So I, right now, our best avenue is looking at insulation and also looking at the, the lighting situation. And we should be getting in some material from these different companies very soon here. We did do a four-year costs average study on the building and the utilities. And even with the, the increases in utilities over the past few years, they, they've remained the same. We're running an average of the same over the past four years for both natural gas and electricity. So it kind of goes to show that through the efforts of the people at Arts Center being conservative and the efforts that have been made by the town, we are, we are seeing, you know, a steady stream as far as the, the flow goes of energy usage.
Thank you, Dwight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's good to know. Thank you so very much. And thank you for your efforts to try to help with that.
Thank you, Laura. Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And through you, Mayor. And thank you, Dwight and Mike, for your updates and the directions that we are going there. I know it seems like almost every year we're discussing this. And it's, it's an ongoing issue. That's all I would like to say is, you know, let's just keep up the efforts and saving where we can. The Arts Center there is a gem in our town. And I know I have brought this up before, but let's still look into it when we can. I know there's a lot of tree interference and stuff, but I would still like to see if there's any possible way we can introduce solar to the building so we can save even more money. Thank you.
I don't think we're going to be able to put them on that building. Yeah, we have the canopies right next door. So hopefully, you know, we can, the town as a whole is saving money. All right, any other questions?
Mayor?
Brian?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just to, Mr. Ryan Wicks. When you say you're working LEDs, you're not talking just the bulbs. You're actually talking the fixtures, right?
That's correct. We're actually getting proposals both ways. They do make a retrofit for the, the existing light fixtures. However, they're, they don't have as long of a lifespan. So, so the changing the fixtures and putting in new LED fixtures, you actually get like double the life. So that, that says a lot right there, you know, you know. So, so we're weighing all those factors and looking at the numbers. But so far, new looks like best.
Good, good. Thank you. I just want to make a comment. I know everyone wants to save electricity. But I love the, when you go on Route 30 at night, when it's dark and the lights are on in the front outside and inside, that building looks fantastic. So please don't shut them off. Maybe you can shut them off at midnight. Please don't shut them off like at 8:00 p.m. because nobody's there because it does look fantastic. And while I enjoy talking to you always, Mr. Hurd, always wonderful. I know that Liz is a great addition. Ms. Bologna, she's going to be a wonderful addition. I have a lot of positive vibes and good feelings for the organization going forward. Thank you very much, everybody from Arts Center East for coming tonight. Thank you. Bye. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Liz, you want to give yourself a minute to introduce yourself?
Oh, sure. So I'm, hi, I'm Liz Bologna. Thanks for having us all here tonight. I'll, I'll keep it short. You know, I've, I've lived in this town almost my entire life. I graduated from Rockville High School. I've been involved at the Arts Center since about 2016, give or take. And it was only in October that I, that I took over as Executive Director, which has been really exciting for me. It's definitely a challenge, but the support of the town has been really, really a big help. And you know, as we're sort of easing out of COVID, we have a lot of plans to further our engagement with the town. You know, we have an exhibit that we do with the Rockville Creative Writing Team over there with Vicky Nordland. We have that exhibit going on. And we are also looking to get involved more in the school systems when we have our April exhibit featuring Charles Ethan Porter, who, if you don't know, was a still life painter from Rockville. His family lived here in the late 18th century, early 19th century. And beyond that, we're going to start having more performances and productions and plays once again. So as we do that, we have plans to reach out to more local businesses, particularly restaurants, to say, you know, do you want to put an ad in our program? We'd love to say, hey, if you bring this program to, you know, Fiesta Mexicana that night, you get a free drink. We can do some kind of partnership with these businesses because we really want to strengthen that partnership that we have with the town at large.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilmember Bush?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Gesse?
Yes.
Latander?
Yes.
Matola? Yavis Matias?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Wendis?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Brian, new business number three.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council approves the recommendations from the Registrar of Voters relative to the changes in the four voting districts relative to the reapportionment commission's recommendations for Assembly Districts 53rd, 56th, and 57th as presented.
Have a second?
Second, Linda.
All right, seconded by Linda. All right, as you guys know, we've had, we have some big changes going on in, in our little town. And the both registers, they have both registers here tonight. There's Chris. Lisa, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so both our registers are on. So Chris, Chris or Lisa, I don't know which one wants to kick this off, but I'm going to let you guys start.
Okay, I guess I'll go since I didn't hear Chris. We have to take action because every 10 years, based on the census, the state legislature has a reapportionment commission. And they change Assembly Districts with your House Districts and Senate Districts. And usually Senate Districts don't change much, and they certainly haven't in Vernon. However, the House Districts have changed. And we used to be, as you well know, the 56th and the 8th. We now are going to have three districts. We are going to have the 56th, no longer the 8th, but the 53rd, and now the 57th. As Bob Hurd said a couple of weeks ago, we're sort of going back to the 80s. If you remember way back then, we had Nancy Wyman and other, and I think Mike Carden and a couple others. When we had the, I would say, the southern part of the town hooked in with Tallinn. And then we also had, back in the day, the sort of the Skinner Road area hooked up with East Windsor and others, legislators such as Terry Bertinison and others represented us. At any rate, given the fact that they made changes, it necessitated our making changes. And we tried to minimize the disruption to our voting districts. And, but we did have to make changes because they made changes. So we are leaving District 1, which is Northeast School as is, no changes. District 2, which is VCMS, now RHS, no changes. Southern part of the town, about 500 voters, which used to be the 8th, is now going to be the 53rd. They're getting shifted over into the District 3, the Skinner, I'm going to say the Skinner Road District. We didn't have a choice on that. That's what the state did. So that's affects about 500 voters. And then in the Skinner Road area, they're getting shifted, that's into the 57th. So what the effect is, is that we're going to have really only when there's a state election or when we have to have two districts go to Skinner Road School. Certain voters, we're sort of splitting up the voters. But the other three districts will remain intact where they vote. Chris, you want to add to that?
No, I think that's, you did a great job. The only thing I just want to say is that the only, like Lisa had pointed out, the only voters that will be in where they vote are those approximately 500 voters south of the highway where they used to vote at south of the highway, where they used to vote at VCMS will now have to vote at Skinner Road. But there's already a portion of voters down there currently from the last time that we did something like this that, that are already voting there. So we've just added a few of their neighbors unfortunately. So there's, there's not a huge disruption. We tried to minimize voter confusion, everything like that to try to, to make it as easy as possible for everyone.
Did you say that those south of the highway have to go all the way to Skinner Road?
Yeah, there's a small portion on the
I would say it's sort of the Washington Street, Campbell Avenue area. Those are the ones going to Skinner Road.
So, so the ones from the 56th?
Correct.
Correct, yes.
Okay, I thought you said 53rd.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
The rest of the district is the 53rd. The rest is south of the highway.
And they're going to VCMS still?
VCMS, yeah, that's where they were.
All right. All right, any questions? Mary Ann?
Hi, I just have a question on how will you notify the voters of the change?
We will be mailing each one of them to let them know what the changes are, where they will vote. So they will get a personal contact from the town.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Laura?
Yes, have you anticipated any budget changes in your budget because of this change in the voting districts?
Chris, I'll let Chris jump in because he prepared, mostly prepared the budget because I'm still fairly new. But we had four districts, we're still having four districts. We don't really need additional staff, if you will. I mean, we can have one moderator, even though we have two House Districts, say at Skinner Road School. We don't, we still only have one moderator. We'll have the two assistants we would normally would have. We might have a couple additional checkers, but really we're talking about three or four additional people on Election Day. That's it.
Yeah, the biggest part of the impact on the budget is simply changing the, the memory cards for the tabulators and the ballots themselves, having to print another set of ballots that accommodates the candidates in the 57th District there. And that, that's really the, the only cost change.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't aware. I thought you might have had to set up two whole voting areas in that one school.
Yeah.
No, we're able to split that, we're able to split the gym and just have a separate checker line for those that vote in the 57th. And, and that's really the only, the only division that we have to have.
And a minimal cost to have two different ballots printed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Linda, did I see your hand up?
Yes, you did. And thank you, Mary Ann. She took the first part of my question, but the second part is, I know that sometimes mail becomes under, undeliverable for whatever reason, I'm not sure. So I'm wondering, when will these notifications be sent out to affected residents and will there be time to try to reach them in the event that their correspondence is returned?
Linda, one of the other things we're going to do is, is, and registers will probably be a good part of this, is our magazine that goes to every household in town. You know, that, that's going to go in the magazine probably two times before the election.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That should take care of it then. Thank you.
Well, just, just so you know, we're doing, we have a two-step process about to start. One is we annually have to do a canvas anyways to find out who has moved out of town, who has died and update our, so we'll be doing that next. And then right after that, we'll be doing this step. So we're, we should catch everybody at that point. Two, with two hits, if you will.
Yeah, sounds like you're making the process very efficient and thank you for doing that.
We're trying. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Anne? Got unmute?
Yep. I may have missed something, but why didn't, why didn't we, why didn't you arrange it such that these 500 people at Washington and Campbell would go to VCMS because it's closer rather than all the way over to Skinner Road?
To keep them within the 56th voting area.
Yeah, we didn't want to cause more confusion at the polls. We're already going to have a division at Skinner Road School with the 56th and 57th. And we didn't want to have two polling places that had a division of voters, especially small line of only about 500.
I see. I get it. Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Brian?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you too. Lisa and Chris, thank you very much for doing this. I know it must not have been fun for some extent, but, so now I'm curious, the fourth district is losing 500 voters to the third district, right? The VCMS district, the Skinner Road district. How many people in the Skinner Road district will be voting in the 50th? Man, this is confusing sometimes, in the 57th district. Like that, just that section they carved out there. You guys know offhand?
Yes. One second, I'm sure she's got to find that card.
I think it is 2077.
2077, wow, that's bigger than it looks on the map.
Yeah. Well, there's a lot of streets. I mean, that's a pretty congested area.
Yep, yeah, okay. So overall in the districts, is there a big disparity between the number of voters in the first, second, third, and fourth? Do you happen to have those numbers?
I, yeah, go ahead, Chris.
The, it's, the, the first, second, and third districts are very similar. The fourth district does have less voters in it. Like Lisa had pointed out, there's a lot of land over there and not a lot of houses. But as far as the numbers in the first, second, and third district are fairly comparable in the 6,000 range. And we also realize that the, the housing in the Takaville area down where Trail Run is, and that area of town will be changing. So the little, the little difference that there is in the third district now that's a bit lower than one and two, I'm sure we'll catch up in the very near future.
Okay, good. And just a clarification on the mailings. Even though you redistrict and I staying in the same district, voting at the same place, I'm still going to get a mailing, right? It's going to go out to all the registered voters?
Uh, no, it's
Just the voters who change?
Yeah, the voters that are going to be changing their polling location will be the ones to receive that individual mailer. But as the mayor said, the magazine that goes to every house will still see that.
And the other mailer that we talked about, we get a list essentially from the post office and others of people who have moved, people who have died, and that's where we'll be focusing our efforts as well.
Okay, so, so that's the normal expense you would incur. The, so it's not really that expensive amount of, big amount of money that we're using because we have to tell people, there's certain people that are changing their voting districts.
Correct, that's correct.
All right. Well, are you going to send something to the people in the Skinner Road area in the 57th saying even though you voted the same place, you're actually voting in another Assembly District, Representative District, I guess? Is that something we have to do?
I don't know exactly off the top of my head what it's going to look like. Lisa and I are still trying to work out the maps here, but, but yes, I'm sure that they will receive something as well, just telling them that their representation has changed.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Brew and Ms. Moody. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Anybody else? Okay, let's vote on the resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Bush?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Flannan?
Yes.
Gesse?
Yes.
Lieutenant?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Matola?
Yes.
Yavis Matias?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Tedford?
Yes.
Wendis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Brian, new business number four.
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to the Vernon Charter, Chapter 15, entitled Miscellaneous Provisions, Section 3, Advisory Boards and Commissions, the Town Council establishes a Cultural District and Cultural District Advisory Board by passing the resolution entitled, a resolution establishing a Cultural District and Cultural District Advisory Board as presented.
Second.
Seconded by John O'Connell. Okay, I have Sean Gaetley on the line and I have Jen. I thought I saw Jen.
She's here as well.
Okay, must have, must have moved. All right, so they are on the line to give us a, basically tell us what's, who's going to present this. Sean, are you or Jen?
I'll, I'll jump in and then Jen will correct me when I get something wrong.
Sounds good. All right, Sean, go ahead.
So as a, as a way of a quick, thank you, Mr. Mayor, as a way of a quick background of why we're here and what we're asking for, I'm going to go over a few points and then take any questions through the mayor if, if there are any. So some of you will remember feasibility studies to establish a performing arts center. Or perhaps you, you attended some of the POCD workshops or attended summer concerts or Shakespeare at the library. Every one of those efforts proved that there was a wide, widespread community support for arts and culture activities and space in town. The state of Connecticut established a a cultural district by the legislature in 2019. And they established, also, I'm sorry, establishing a cultural district is also a sustainable Connecticut action item that we're currently pursuing. In order to establish a cultural district, there are a few things that need to happen. First, a community meeting needs to take place, and that meeting was held on December 9th, 2021 at the library. The legislative body must approve by, a cultural district by resolution and form a cultural district commission. Now, there are a number of things that have to happen after that, but that is why we're in front of you today. So a cultural district by definition, or the definition is, a cultural district is a specific area of a city or town identified by the municipality that has a number of cultural facilities, activities, and/or assets for both profit and not-for-profit organizations. It is walkable, compact area that is easy for visitors to recognize. It's a center for cultural activities, artistic and economic. It's a place in your city or town where community members congregate and visitors may enjoy those places that make a, make the community special. So some of the benefits of a cultural district or establishing a cultural district through, through the, the state of Connecticut, there are they will assist with marketing and it is, it will help attract visitors. It can promote and encourage artists, entrepreneurs, and creative businesses. It promotes tourism and increases visitation. It improves the quality of life for the residents. It strengthens the distinctive character of the community. Creates a plan to drive economic growth and expand our tax base. As I mentioned before, it supports sustainable Connecticut certification. It contributes to Connecticut's cultural assets. It it'll highlight the culture and history in our community. And as some of you may remember, we're currently in the process of conducting a health impact assessment to make sure that we're fully assessing the benefits and as well as any, any negatives that may be lurking under the surface. So a few of the, and we're fortunate that we partnered with the University of Connecticut School of Public Health, and I believe some of those students that are helping us with this are on this call tonight. So again, as we mentioned, some of their preliminary research has pointed out a few other benefits. The enhancement of property values in the area that helps drive businesses and job development. It promotes tourism. It promotes physical activity, walking, biking, et cetera. And it also can reduce crime and violence in the area. So so some of the other reasons, I'm sorry, the cultural district commission needs to have very specific, there's some very specific requirements for that. A, a member of a local cultural council or arts council needs to be on it. A member of a cultural organization like a historical society or museum or ethnic heritage organization needs to be on it. At least one artist who lives in or works in the district, organizations that represent artists, like an artist cooperative. For, for-profit creative businesses like a gallery or theater, as well as local businesses and/or members of the Chamber of Commerce. And then they give some optional, in addition to those six mandatory criteria, you can also include people in the tourism industry, historic preservation, leisure industry, like restaurants or hotels, educational institutions, and members of the economic and community development community. The cultural district, which is in, contains in the resolution, has a number of charges, establishing goals and objectives, establishing a management plan, mapping, mapping the district and establishing an inventory of businesses, creative, cultural, historic businesses and structures within that community, and then establishing some goals and success measures for, for the district. So I am, I'm able to answer any questions if you have them?
So the the cultural district advisory board, everything's going to go through, you know, through us and just to make sure that we continue to to be advised on what they're involved in. But the, Sean, can you do one more thing for me?
Yes, absolutely.
Describe the area that this is going to include?
Yeah, I have it up in the background, but let me, let me see if I can pull it a little bit closer to the camera. So if you can, if you can see this, the, our proposed district would begin down at Saxony, Saxony Dog Park. Continue up West Main Street, including some of our historic structures like the, the Hawk in the Mill, the Motorcycle Museum, Florence Mill, continuing up, including the area of the hospital, getting closer to Town Hall. At Town Hall, it would come up to include Talcott Park behind Town Hall. I'm actually looking upside down, so I want to make sure I have I have it there. All right, including Talcott Park, coming down all the way over to the Gene Pitney Memorial Park, and we're hoping to include Henry Park as well on that. So again, we have some, some work to do there. So that's a rough idea. We still have to go through our regional, our designated regional service organization with Greater Hartford Arts Council and the State of Connecticut Department of the Arts for final approval. So we'll have more work on that district to, to make sure that we're, we have that buttoned up.
Right. And then the, the other part to this is that we want to see if we can reengage with UConn. You know, it looks like COVID. You know, we're at a point now with COVID that we should be able to reengage with UConn and the, the old senior center. And as part of that, you know, we have a couple of other organizations that aren't within the district right now. And we have a room inside the old senior center that, but we do convert that over that we want to make available for displays from those other organizations, including Art Center East and the Historical Society. So in the future, there is an opportunity for us to create other districts, but a lot of it is walkable areas as well. So, you know, right now we're starting this and hopefully this is going to be very successful. All right, Julie?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I'm sorry, oops, hold on. Oh, gosh, hold on. Why isn't it working? Keeps flashing off. Keeps flashing off. I'm sorry, I apologize.
We see you now.
Okay, through you, you don't even need to see me, I guess, but through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Sean and Jen, for all your hard work. That was a great presentation in December, and it really made clear what the goals were, and I, I'm really enjoying the idea of that. A couple of questions. When you establish the advisory board, does a budget go along with that? Are we budgeting? Is the town giving, putting a budget together for this?
Well, I, I'll take that, Sean. So, the Arts Commission that is, we currently have, has a budget. But that commission, when it was first started, basically stated that when there is a building within the community that is designated, or is, is sole purpose is the arts, which is Art Center East, that that commission would be dissolved. So what we did is, by starting this new district here, we have reached out to them to see who would wanna be part of this new the Cultural District and Cultural District Advisory Board, and we have at least one member that, that wants to join this. So, we, we basically lived up to the charter on, or lived up to the, the ordinance that created the others. Now, we don't know if we're gonna just move the budget over. What we do need is, we're gonna need kinda to see if we form this budget, or we form this, this, this cultural district, and then, once they're together, kinda go over and see if we're gonna need a budget. If so, I'd like to use some of that, some of the available funds to move over into that advisory district.
Oh, good idea.
The, yeah, the advisory board district.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. That, that's a great idea. I like that, that crossing over the, the boards. So, in Section Three, it, it talks about the, the board must be shared interest of the district. The majority must live or work in the defined district area. Are we, are we speaking of that walking area that, what Sean just outlined, Sean, or when you say defined district area, because I noticed in the, the third part, you know, that you're looking for, you know, a historical society, an artist, and blah, blah, blah. So is it just people in the, in that, in that area to be on the board?
So, we're, we're gonna continue to, to get some guidance from our, our service organization. We have a number of, quite a few artistic, cultural, historical resources in town. We have quite a few. So we have a, we have a pool of candidates to, to, to choose from that, that either work or live in the area. Obviously, we haven't reached out to anyone, we haven't asked for resumes, we haven't done any of that to date, because we don't have a commission right now. But as, as soon as we do, we'll be, we'll be kind of evaluating, making sure we can fill those criterias as the mayor had mentioned.
Okay, but it's not, it's not, they want the majority, the, I guess the setup is this, they want the majority in that district area, but
vested in the district, yes.
Okay, but if for some reason a year comes that maybe you're short of the majority of that, is it stretchable enough to, to, you know, go outside that, that area?
So, through the mayor, there is, there is one district in the state of Connecticut right now, it's Ridgefield.
Right.
And they learned during Ridgefield's application process that they couldn't be too rigid. So, we're still working through, and they're still working through what their requirements are, or how strict their requirements are going to be.
Good, okay. And then, when do you envision this getting off the ground? Is this, as far as putting the committee together and moving forward, is this within a year, or is it six months, or what's, what do you think?
Julie, if you see the cartoon where somebody goes to run and their feet just start spinning. So, the second we get this, we're gonna, we're gonna move as fast as we possibly can to, to, to get it up and running. Obviously, we, we have, we have timelines and deadlines for Sustainable Connecticut that we're trying to meet. We have a, a large task in front of us as a community to, to make this, this successful. There's a lot of people that have a vested interest in this, and we're looking forward to, to really pushing this forward as fast as we can.
Well, congratulations on the work you guys have done. It really has come far, and, you know, I appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just a quick question. So, in terms of the verbiage in, in the proposal, I was just curious, the areas that were identified were downtown Rockville, and the proposal states downtown Vernon. I just wanted to clarify, were the intentions to include Vernon at some point? Is there a particular reason?
Through the mayor, if I may. So, the, the legislate, the bill that enabled the district allows you to, at some point, to establish multiple districts. So, we, we have a long way to go before we can start looking at two, or three, or four districts. We have to, we have to start with our, kind of our largest, where the critical mass is. So, at some point, it is possible that there will be other areas of town that can be considered. For this time, we're talking about simply the Rockville kind of business district from, as I said, Saxony Park to the Gene Pitney Park.
Great, thank you. And, and as well as that, including that these areas must be walkable, I know that there are some individuals who believe that our town is not that walkable. Is there any intent to include some sidewalks in there to make this a really connected district?
So, actually, the, the whole area has sidewalks.
The, the dog park all the way through to Gene Pitney is fully sidewalked?
Yep, the only, the only part that does not have is right around the dog park. Well, it does, it has it on West Street. And then all of West Main and most of the other streets all have sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anne?
Um, yes, I just have a, a couple of questions. First, it's just not clear to me can, why we say downtown Vernon? Because I don't think people relate to that area as downtown Vernon, it's downtown Rockville.
Right.
Was there some legal reason that that's what is stated in the resolution? That's how you're stating it in the resolution?
Sean?
No. I, I, I have to take a, a peek at the resolution to, just to confirm.
Oh, I just hate to see us lose Rockville identity. I mean, it is a small mill village, and this is very typical of New England, and we associate all the historical and, you know, structures with Rockville, which just seems to me that we should be saying downtown Rockville in the, in the resolution.
Through the mayor, if that is an amendment that, that we'd like to make, we certainly can make that. I, I don't believe there's any, any reason at this point.
Let, let Mike, let Mike, let Mike talk on that one. Mike?
Okay, there we go. I think the audio is there. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think the, the change there, if that's where the council wants to go, is acceptable, won't change any consideration for the purposes of Sustainable Connecticut. Through the mayor to Anne's question though, in particular, the intent was to maintain the identity of Vernon while still also bringing the, you know, when people hear downtown Rockville, they don't, they don't, they've, that, that don't live in the world that we live in, in Vernon every single day, in Rockville every day. We, we didn't wanna, we were kinda looking at it as an advantage the other way, that it's part of Vernon as a whole. And we wanted the rest of the community to understand and see the value in the work that we're doing in the downtown area. So, that, that was the, the thought process behind it, but it's, it's not a make or break deal by any means as far as the application goes.
Mike, can we just, if we changed it to create a cultural district in Vernon, specifically downtown Rockville, just changing it, something like that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that, that would be fine. And I, and I would just reiterate through you, Mr. Mayor, you know, we're always thinking of what's next, the bigger picture. And so, we, if we kept the word Vernon in there, and I think the mayor touched on it, and satisfies both points, if we ever wanna expand and do another, expand the district beyond the downtown Rockville area, at least the door is open for that as well.
Right, that's good. I, I like that, mentioning both.
I think that works, because it really identifies, still has Vernon, but specifically the downtown Rockville area. Do you need a vote or anything on that? Alright, we'll do that when we're done with the questions. Keep going in.
So, my second question is through you, Your Honor, to Sean.
Go ahead.
And it just struck me as I was reading through this, Sean, and I know you're familiar with planning and zoning, right? Why there is, or had you thought about this? It just seems because it's, we're defining a land area, and is there some way that planning and zoning, or the planning department should be incorporated here, or do you see that coming down the road? Like, it's kind of an overlay map to zoning, and, and, you know, if they were to get an application that's within the cultural district, they should be aware of it somehow. So, it seemed to me there should be a connection.
Understood, but it, it's, it's not a, the underlying zoning is still the governing, right, the uses. So it doesn't really have any zoning implications. That's one of the reasons why it's the, one of the areas we chose, because it, it consists of the Rockville Village Overlay District and the Rock, the downtown business. There's like four zones that it, it covers inside of it. So, the, the businesses, the uses that we're trying to attract are permitted in the underlying zoning.
Alright, so, planning and zoning would be aware that, how would they know that what the application they're entertaining is in that cultural district? Would it be a checkbox on the application, something like that, that you might do, or?
Again, and, and these uses are permitted by right in most of these districts, so it's not, not something that will, they'll see a lot of applications for.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and also then just another question. I assume you would be the staff liaison that's mentioned in Section Four?
No, I've been, I've been trying to get a moment to thank Jen for everything she's been doing on this, and I, I hate to continue to, to run my mouth here, but Jen Johnson has been doing the lion's share of all this, all this work. So, she would remain the, she would become the staff liaison, help coordinate, to the mayor's point earlier, of communicating with administration and making sure that, you know, we're in lockstep and making sure we're, we're just doing what we need to do on all fronts.
Thank you. So, just back to the first point you made, Your Honor, you had said, are you going to disband the Arts Commission? Is that what you said?
If you actually read the ordinance that, that formed it, it was only formed up, up to the point that a building was put into place specifically for the arts. So we've kept it going through the years, but it really, on Art Center East forming, they were to be disbanded, according to the ordinance.
Um, I just don't see the Art Center East as taking on the kind of responsibilities that the Arts Commission did.
They're not taking on any responsibilities. They're, they're basically
Well, they're doing the things that they were doing. You know, they were, they were helping to, you know, fund concerts, that sort of thing around town for other organizations.
And, and we're looking at maybe some of those responsibilities is gonna be switched over to this, the, the Cultural District Advisory Board.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Terry?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, Ian and Arianna, kind of asked most of the questions that I was going to ask, but I was concerned with the, the verbiage for the downtown Vernon area. I think it's a great idea, and I hope that this does come to fruition, and what we say we're doing, going to do is what we're going to ultimately do at the end of the day by creating a cultural district. So I'm excited to see what's gonna come out of it. So as far as the advisory board members, will you be reaching out to the high school in any way to have any representation, you know, from the schools?
Jen, you wanna speak on that part?
Uh, sure. Through you, Mayor. It is a possibility. I mean, obviously, as you can see in the resolution, we do have six requirements as the state has put forward. But we do have other opportunities to add to other members. So, you know, if there is somebody from the school who has an interest and kind of can still fit, you know, the needs of the, of the commission, then that is a possibility for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Can I speak, man? Linda? Got unmuted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought I unmuted myself. So this is really very exciting for Vernon, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing it roll out. Briefly, the H I A piece was mentioned during this discussion. I'd like to know more about how that interfaces with the cultural district.
Through, through the mayor. So, as a quick recap, the, one of the, an additional Sustainable Connecticut action item is that we conduct a health impact assessment. So, the, the action that we chose to apply that health impact assessment to was the establishment of the cultural district. So, what it's doing is it's, it's, it's having, again, the students that are on, that are working on it for us, along with Michelle Hill and her staff. They're taking a look at cultural districts and a variety of different places and communities, and seeing what some of the benefits, and any, any negatives that may have come from that were, and how do you accentuate the, the, the positives and mitigate the negatives? So that's, that's what it's looking at. It, it wants to make sure we're, it's a planning tool to take a look at a policy decision and make sure that you're not having any unintended consequences. That's really what it is. So we're applying it to this. This is our first one. This is the, kind of a, dipping the toe in the pond of, of the health impact assessment to take a look and see if it's something that's worthwhile continuing. And, at, for the time being, this is the action that they're applying. And I, I hope I answered that question, because there's, there is no direct correlation other than this is what we're studying. We're studying the formation of a cultural district. And obviously, if it, if it came out and said that the cultural district is gonna give everybody diabetes, we would think twice about doing it. I don't, I don't foresee that being, I don't foresee that being an issue. I, everything we're looking at, as I said, are really positive attributes. If something negative comes out of it, then we'll do our best to mitigate it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Any other council people? Brian?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Johnston and Mr. Gately, whoever would like to answer. First of all, having a cultural district centered in the map area you sho- shown doesn't prevent us from having a second or third district in town, does it?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. The, the name of the district, and I, I almost would assume that the other district in Ridgefield is named a Ridgefield Cultural District, something like that. But could the advisory board come up with a name like the, you know, off the top of my head, the Gene Pitney Cultural District or something, or?
That, that is something that they can do. Obviously, it, there'll be a lot of thought put into it, and again, the marketing plan, and the, that's part of the charge that the commission will have, is to evaluate names and, and opportunities for, for organic growth as well as, as created.
Okay, good, good, because while I, like, using Art Center East, Vernon Community Art Center, I think Art Center East gives you a bigger regional draw, which would be nice, especially if there's only two in the straight, state Ridgefield and us. It might work out better that. So, can the board also revise the map?
Well, absolutely. I, I, well, I mean, again
Hold on, Sean, Sean. They, they can't do it on their own. They have to come through us in order to change the map at all. Alright, we're the ones actually passing this, that it would have to come through us.
So, we don't have a map attachment with this. So I was, when I was, Sean was doing that, was, I mean, Mr. Gately was showing us, I was taking that as just to be, here's the generic area or something.
Right. But if they wanted to expand it, we would have them come through us with, with that expansion. Because I, I think that's the best way to do that.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I can, it, to, to clarify again, we're suggesting boundaries and the commission will suggest boundaries, but the commission is actually, you're, you're establishing support for a district and a, and establishing a commission. The Department of the, the Office of the Arts is the one that actually certifies the district. So there'll be a lot of modifications back and forth. For, I'll give you, for instance, we would love to include Henry Park. Henry Park is a beautiful facility, a lot of events take place there. It may not be deemed walkable. If it's not deemed walkable, they may ask us to remove it. So there's going to be ebb and flow with the, the district and we're going to continue to work through all the regulations and hurdles that we need to with the administration and the commission working, like I said, in lockstep, trying to move it forward.
Okay, the, the commission of the arts, is that what it is? What's the state, what's the state governing body, I guess?
It's the Department of Economic and Community Development, the Office of the Arts is housed inside of that.
All right. And since you're involved with economic development, this cultural district could drive some economic development, both downtown and in, in the entire city, right?
The arts and cultural activities are, are huge drivers as well as events. And as, as Liz, I'm looking forward to working, working more with Liz on this as well. As Liz pointed out earlier, there are opportunities for kind of cross pollination. The arts drive visitors, the visitors spend dollars. There are a lot of opportunities to, to capitalize off this.
Very good, because I'd like to make sure that the Arts Commission ties in with Art Center East and with Vernon Historical Society, which has a bunch of Ethan Porter paintings, you know, so they could do on loan or whatever it is, cross pollinate and, and maybe cross money raise too, that would be great. And that was pretty much, and that was pretty much all I had. Thank you, Mr. Yes, oh, wow. We can't really read that, Mr.
Yeah, well, you can just get an idea. So Jen had put this together and this is an inventory, a preliminary inventory of the cultural, historic and artistic assets that we have inside of our district. We're also allowed to list other assets that may reside outside of the district. And on that, you will see, if you could see, there is the Art Center East, the Historical Society, Valley Falls Park, Strong Farm Family, Strong Family Farm. I said Valley Falls, the Garden Club, et cetera. So there are a number, there are a number of other organizations that, that we'd like to cross market. And, and we are a community, one community, so taking advantage of that, this is an excellent opportunity to do.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. This has my support. I, I love it. I love the idea and all the work that you and Ms. Johnston have put into it, everybody else. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mike?
Yes, through the mayor, I, I also just want to reiterate that by doing this, this will better position the town for seeking potential grants that we normally would not have access to by having this designation.
Anybody else? All right, so.
Yes, I wanted to ask some questions.
Danara, you can't ask questions during this time.
Okay.
All right, all right, so I think we want to do two things. Do, do you need a roll call vote for the change of the name or do, can we do it by voice? All right, so we want to do two things. I know we wanted to change the, from the district in downtown Vernon. And I'd like to take a vote first, well, I need a motion to change it to Vernon, specifically downtown Rockville. So it would say the cultural district in Vernon, specifically downtown Rockville. Terry made the motion, John O'Connell second. Okay, so we're going to take a, a vote on that first.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Gesse?
Yes.
Latander?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Matola?
Yes.
Yavis Mathias?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Tedford?
Yes.
Wendis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was the, the motion within the motion. We're back to the, the, the original motion. And we're going to take a roll call vote for accepting the amended resolution.
Councilmember Bush?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Gesse?
Yes.
Under?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Matola?
Yes.
Yavis Mathias?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Tedford?
Yes.
Wendis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Five. Mr. Mayor, resolve the town council graciously accepts the donation, an amount of thirty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-two cents to be reserved for the purchase of a specifically bred canine, necessary equipment and training with a police officer handler.
Second, Mary Ann.
Seconded by Mary Ann. I believe. Lisa is on?
Yes, I am.
Lisa, I'd like, you just speak quick on, you know, just a little bit about how this came to be and, and, and what you and, I think some members of our, of our town council got involved as well.
Indeed, they did. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to everybody who was involved. It was a wonderful community effort. People didn't hesitate to step up. In particular, I'd like to acknowledge Julie Clay, who was very instrumental right from the beginning, as well as Kathy Stevens. Tim Pulaski was involved. Martha Kane, Patty Noblet and a few others. And we got together and put around canisters and got some press. And before you knew it, we were up at thirty-six thousand dollars, which hopefully will be enough, will, will be enough for this dog and a future dog if needed. So people were so generous in, in the town. And the one that really touched our souls was at Maple Street School, where the kids raised like eight hundred dollars. It just, with pennies and nickels and dressing up and dressing down, it was just, it was a great community effort. And I thank you, Mayor, for the help of the town as we did this and the help of the chief as well.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you so much for putting this together and, and really getting it moving. Right, is there questions? Julie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you ever want to raise thirty-six thousand, have Lisa Moody put, be in charge of the group. I, I just have to thank her, that woman, Lisa, you put together the group, you assigned the tasks. Everyone had to go out and everyone was afraid not to do what she asked you to do. So it was, it was well worth the effort, but really the, the, the group, I, I haven't been with a better group of people motivated to get some cute new little dog. So.
Yeah.
We're looking forward to meeting them and thanks, Lisa.
Thank you, and we can't wait to meet him, is right.
Yeah, and, and I do want to say that, you know, the, the community really, I mean, they geared up right away when they heard what happened. And, and then Lisa jumped right on it. It, it, it's amazing and I, and I can't thank those involved enough. All right, anybody else? Yes, you know, hands up. It'll be a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bush?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Gesse?
Yes.
Latander?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Matola?
Yes.
Yavis Mathias? Yavis Mathias? Councilmember O'Connell?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Tedford?
Yes.
And Wendis?
Yes.
Councilmember Yavis Mathias there?
Ariana? Right, Brian, new business number six.
Mr. Mayor, resolve the town council hereby approves the purchase of two police cruisers with the funding to be appropriated from the police special services cruiser hours account.
Seconded by Laura Bush. All right, so what is this, what is this fund, first of all? This fund is, when you see the officers getting hired by private contractors on the side of the road and they have a police car, they pay for that, use of that police car. A few years back, some of you may remember, we, we just used to allow that money to go right into the general fund. What we've done now is we've set that money that we collect for those road jobs and put it aside for, for off budget cruisers. Because every couple of years, you got to buy a couple more to kind of catch up. So we have two in the budget and then, you know, as this fund builds up, you know, we, we pay for more cruisers that way. So we got notified that, you know, they're going to hold the line on cruisers for a while. And they basically reached out and said, listen, if you want to put an order in for new cruisers, we're going to hold the price at last year's price. And we wanted to jump on that. And we had the money, we have the money and, and this fund will have the money. And we decided that, you know, we're going to get these cars, order them now at last year's price. The, well, that's pretty much it. That's, that's everything in a nutshell. So I don't think I could say anymore on it. Questions? Terry?
Through you, Mayor. What was that cost for the cruisers? I don't know if you can say or not.
Yeah, each cruiser, I believe, is thirty-seven thousand, right around there.
Thank you.
And it will be the, the hybrid ones that they're making now. All right, Laura, you're welcome.
With the vehicle shortages, what is the lead time that we have in order to get the vehicle?
Thirty weeks.
Wow.
That's why we want to jump on it now. Yep. Okay. Anybody else? All right, it'll be a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bush?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Gesse?
Yes.
Under?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Matola?
Yes.
Yavis Mathias?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Tedford?
Yes.
Wendis?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Brian, the, uh, let's do the adoption of minutes.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, the town council waves the reading of the minutes of the regular town council meeting on February first, twenty-twenty-two. And that minutes of said meeting be approved.
Seconded by Julie Clay.
Yay!
Your box lit up first. All right, um, are there any corrections or deletions? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, any abstentions? All right, unanimous. All right, what we're going to do to, right now is we're going to go, we're going to go into executive sessions. I'm going to, I'm going to read it first, but Brian, can you do executive session number two first? So that we can get the, the attorney out of the way so we stop paying him?
Right.
Love Lou, but.
Mr. Mayor, the town council pursuant to the authority given in Connecticut General Statutes one dash two hundred two hereby moves to go into executive session to discuss personnel and invites Michael J. Picaro, Town Administrator, Don Mezlic, Assistant Town Administrator, Town Attorney Lou Spadacini and Fire Department Chief Steve Epler to attend.
Second, Mary Ann.
Seconded by Mary Ann. All right, all of those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous.
Resolve, the town council hereby approves the comprehensive EMS ambulance staffing plan as presented by the administration. And further, the town council authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designated draft and ordinance for same to be presented at the town council meeting on March first, twenty-twenty-two for review and forwarding to public hearing on March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Seconded by John O'Connell. All right, all those in favor? Oh, yeah, yeah, hold on, hold on, this is a roll call one. I just got yelled at. I'm sorry, Karen.
Okay, last, last time, Councilmember Bush?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Gesse?
Yes.
Latander?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Matola?
Yes.
Yavis Mathias?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Tedford?
Yes.
Wendis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Brian?
Mr. Mayor, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Terry's hand was up first. Terry gets the second on that one. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Mike, you opposed? Abstentions? Thanks, guys.